Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the official meeting. It is July 2nd, 2025. This meeting is a public forum and we do have a call-in option. The meeting is being video and audio recorded with minutes taken. And our meetings are also live streamed, so we welcome everybody that's online today. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium. Give us your name and address for the record and please keep your comments at right around three minutes. And if you're sharing or speaking on behalf of others, please let us know. Are there any awards, recognition?
Well, I don't know if I'd call it an award per se, but I do would like to wish one of my colleagues a happy birthday. You're a day late. Happy birthday.
Thank you. And I'm not sixty-five for all of you that know the lines. Not me. Thank you. Any other?
I, I would endorse that. But did we miss the, did I miss the pledge?
Yes, we did do the pledge.
Okay. I came on late then.
No, you were there. I don't, I don't know.
Okay.
Oh, well.
All right. Also, too, I wanted to mention that we have three Little League teams in our area that are district champions and going on to state. So I thought that was, that was big news. And always great when kids do great things. So, yeah. Um, let's see. So move down approval of minutes of previous meeting.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Are there any additions to the agenda? Public input and recognition of visitors. We have a few visitors today, but I think they're going to speak in a few minutes. The welcome. Our first item of business, road jurisdiction transfer.
Morning Commissioners, Tom, fellow Road Works Director. Not used to being first up. Don't know what, how that happened. So before the board today is a jurisdiction transfer of a piece of County Road. It's referred to as Juvenile Detention Road. It runs up to the Reese Goode project that the city has going for, for housing up on top of the hill. Conversations with the city, they agreed to take a portion of that road since they have plans. They've actually already improved some of it and they have plans for future improvement on, on another portion of it. So the portion on the map that is marked in red is the portion that will be transferred to the city. And have any other questions on that or not?
Is all of that County Road, even the part that's down there on?
The County Road actually starts clear down at the railroad crossing, if you know where that's at, John.
Yeah. Yep, okay.
And, and the portion that we're transferring is just below where the juvenile detention is and then on up the hill. And, and County right away actually does run all the way up the hill.
I, I know Tom, I sat through at least one of the meetings that Tom had with the city of Pendleton and I thought that it was pretty thoroughly discussed, including some of the floodwater runoff and, and connections. So I would move in favor of this.
This is a public hearing.
Oh, sorry.
This is a public hearing. I'm sorry. Thank you, Tom, for the information. Is there any more discussion on this? They will move out of public hearing and back to our regular meeting.
I, I would move for approval of the transfer of specified section of Goode Road to the city of Pendleton.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Do we, do we need to adopt that order?
That, that will, that will be adopted.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, by the way.
You want me to go?
Hi. Our next item of business, sanitary disposal rate increase.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Gia Meller and I am the staff liaison for the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And with me today, I'm honored to introduce Mr. Mike McHenry from Pendleton Sanitary. He is the current chair of the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And also with me is Kevin Miracle, who is the GM of Sanitary Disposal Incorporated. We are here today about sanitary disposals rate increase proposal. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee met on April 8th, 2025, where Sanitary Disposal Incorporated presented a rate increase proposal. Following a discussion on this proposal, the committee voted to table the agenda item to a later date and asked Mr. Miracle to provide additional information to address specific criteria cited in Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinance dealing with rate increases. The committee met again on May 6th, where Mr. Miracle did present additional information to support their rate increase request. This meeting was held largely under executive session under O R S 192.502 due to the proprietary nature of the financial information being discussed. The committee voted unanimously to approve the rate increase proposal of thirty percent for the collection and disposal franchise for sanitary disposal and to recommend the proposal to the Board of Commissioners for final approval according to Chapter 50.070 of the Code of Ordinances. The fourteen public, fourteen day public notice was published in the East Oregon on May 28th, 2025, and our office did not receive any written remonstrances in, in response to this proposal. The public notice was also posted in three public locations, also on May 28th, 2025, as required by the ordinance. At this time, all of the criteria to request a rate increase have been satisfied by sanitary disposal and this matter is now before you for your decision. Mr. Miracle is here today to answer questions, as is Mr. McHenry. And I believe you also have a colleague on, calling in from Sanitary Disposal. So I will turn it over to them.
Thanks for, for listening to me today. I get nervous when I get in front.
We just need your name.
Kevin Miracle from Sanitary Disposal.
Sir, we need your address. Just your name and address.
Kevin Miracle, P O Box 316, Hermison, Oregon, 9783. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm going to put my glasses on. Thank you for your time and attention to support the matter. I aim to provide transparency and context as you evaluate our request for a rate adjustment under the Umatilla County Franchise Agreement. As outlined in the agreement, the rate adjustments are determined based on several key factors. One, labor, medical and benefit costs. Labor costs have risen significantly due to market pressure and the need to remain competitive in recruiting and retaining skilled employees. Despite our operating, despite operating in negative margins in Umatilla County, we remain committed to investing in our team through competitive wages and benefits. Two, parts repairs and equipment investment. Supply chain disruption and inflation have greatly increased the cost of parts, maintenance and repairs. In response, we've made substantial capital investments in newer, safer and more efficient equipment to improve our service reliability and better serve the community. At the time of purchase, our fleet's average age was twenty-seven and a half years old, underscoring the urgent need for modernization. Since 2021, we've invested seven point six million into new equipment. Facility improvements. We, we've invested significantly in facility upgrades to improve safety, compliance and operational efficiency. These enhancements are crucial to maintaining reliable service and ensuring a safe work environment. Additional improvements are still needed to meet future growth, comply with evolving regulations and support the day-to-day operations. Population and density and rural service challenges. Our service territory, service territory includes large rural areas with low customer density, resulting in higher per cost due to extended drag times, increased fuel consumption and greater wear and tear on equipment. Factors not present in more urban settings. C P I and overall cost increase. Inflation and rising C P I continue to impact all aspects of our business, from fuel, insurance to materials and disposal. These increases are unavoidable and make it increasingly difficult to sustain an operation under these current rate structures. Reasonable return on investment. The franchise agreement allows for a reasonable turn-on investment. To continue investing in our workforce, equipment and facilities, we must operate at a reasonable margin. The proposed rates that we received, that we reviewed and were supported by the SWAC committee are comparable to other haulers in the market and will allow us to earn a reasonable rate of return. Financial position and request for relief. Sanitary disposals operated in Umatilla County with negative margins for the past three and a half years, threatening long-term service reliability and operational sustainability. To support this request, I've included the following documents. A detailed breakdown of daily operational costs. A summary of recent capital investments. Labor and benefit costs. C P I and year-over-year cost increases and comparable, comparable rates in similar markets. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee has reviewed our financials and for the second consecutive year has recommended approval of our rate adjust, our rate adjustment. If approved, we recommend future rate adjustments be tied to a hundred percent or the annual C P I, with the exception of any additional requirement stemming from the Oregon statewide recycling mandate. I also have my business partner, Shayna Lilly, on the line. So if you have any some financial questions, I'm a little foggy on, she can jump in and kind of help out. So, thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Real quick, Kevin, I got a question. You made a comment that sort of puts us in, and I'm paraphrasing, puts us in alignment with other haulers in the region. Is that in Umatilla County or is that what haulers specifically you're talking about?
It's, it's from, from, I think we have Wasco County in there, Morrow County, Pendleton, Umatilla County. So it's even Jimmy and like the Yukaya, the, the south part of Umatilla County also. So there's a handful, I think there's probably seven or eight that we had listed on there with comparable rates.
I, I've got several questions. Thanks, thanks Kevin and, and Mike for being, being in there for sure. Thank you for the additional information you sent, Kevin. That was helpful. The one, one, well, I want to start off in several areas, but the one thing I do want to stress that if there was ever a shot at a thirty percent increase, we would be picking garbage up off of the side of the roads and throughout Umatilla County, the west end of Umatilla County on a daily basis. Those, those types of increases are going to really dissuade the people from, from even signing up. But let's, where I want to start is on recycled material over the last year. I know that I talked to D E Q and their latest is 2022. But on the phone, there is, at least the conversation is, it has been trending the same. I know that your goal is twenty point five percent. But what really strikes me is that since 2021, recycled materials have gone down by over ten percent, actually over eleven percent. Why is that?
The market? You know, there's.
But. Yeah, so in your annual report, it says an increase in recyclable commodity revenues as compared to prior periods due to increasing commodity values. But even with that, your recycles are going down. I, I guess I don't understand that part.
Well, I think, are you looking at waste connections or are you looking at sanitary disposal? The sanitary.
I'm looking at waste, waste connections in the Western District.
I'm, yeah, I'm talking about sanitary disposal in Umatilla County. That's a different, that's different.
Oh, I don't know. I'm looking at Umatilla Counties, the waste shed in Umatilla County. I'm looking at their, their recycles by tonnage.
Better versed to answer.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike. Dan, it's Mike McHenry, Chair of the SWAC, P O Box 1405, Pendleton, Oregon. And I think I might be better versed to answer that question. Now, when you're looking at Umatilla County waste sheds recycling report, that includes all of Umatilla County, not only sanitary disposal, but Pendleton Sanitary Service, Humberts, Jimmy Dory, Pilot Rocks, but that's all of us combined. And the answer to your question about, I asked this question you're asking of D E Q about why that rate had gone down, and there are some mistakes. D E Q has admitted there are some mistakes in that report from 2022. There are some things left out. For whatever reason inadvertently, they've left our yard waste tonnage out from our composting operation, our wood waste tonnage out. And there is a huge discrepancy, discrepancy in Umatilla County on the scrap iron volume. They've missed something. The tonnage, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the tonnage for the prior three or four years was X and, and in 2022 it was half that number. So they, they are aware and I have pointed out that there are some mistakes in that opportunity to recycle report for Umatilla County for the year that we're looking at. And Dan, I guess I misunderstood your question, but one of the issues, you know, one of the issues that we have with our depots, they're not manned. And so what happens is that people throw trash into all of our containers. When we bring it back and we put it on the tip floor, it's not anything we can recycle. So it's not tons that we can say that we recycle. They actually have to go into the trash because they're ninety-five percent trash.
But well, all I can do is look at prior years and what D E Q has. I agree that both of you guys good explanations and I know that D E Q in the next two weeks is supposed to have the new report and the accurate reports out and their, their, their I T system did get hacked. So that, that's slowing down a lot of, a lot of the questions. But let's give, now I, I want to get into the financials too. And I apologize to my colleagues. If there's questions, please jump in, you guys. I, I, I definitely don't want to run, run, dominate the questions. But let's, let's start out with the thirty percent request. And again, the only documents I have are the Western District. So that's what, what I'm going off of on my comments. You can definitely jump in on, on different, different conversations, Kevin, because that's, that's all I have. So to start with, thirty-one percent is allocated to corporate. Is that correct for sanitary disposal too?
Uh, I'm not clear on that. Shane, are you, are you on the line?
I thought I just saw somebody join. Morgan Linder, maybe is that?
Thirty-one percent doesn't go to corporate. I know that.
Well, that just would have showed. So that's, and that, and that's why I'm asking.
I can get you the answer, but I know thirty-one percent doesn't go to corporate.
This is Derek Ranthat from Waste Connections, nine four one one, Northeast 94th Avenue in Vancouver, Washington. And I'm the replacement for Jason Hudson, who you may have met over the years. But the corporate allocation you're talking about is usually about, it's about two and a half to three percent of our total revenues and that covers insurance, legal fees, kind of general business overhead that, that's handled out of a more corporate level than the local level.
Derek, let me be clear that that's not what your annual statement says.
Yeah, and I, I don't have that document in front of me right now, but I'm just, that, in general, that's what our corporate overhead structure is, is located at. So, but there might be other things in the statement that you're looking at that could cover some of those costs. And we call it, sometimes we call it overhead, you know, general administrative. But I just want to be clear, corporate overhead, I don't think is at that same level. But I'd have to look at what's in there.
Right. The state, the statement at the start of your annual report states that, that you're better positioned. One of the items listed is direct support at greater than thirty percent, which is an increase of three percent in past years. So, so that's the only place I, I got that from.
Yeah.
Okay. Also, so I mean, if there, let's say it's twenty percent. I mean, even a thirty percent request for an increase to send that kind of money back to corporate is, is, is kind of tough when it goes straight to the bottom line. Next, next is, I don't know if you can answer this or not, Derek, but under the impairments in other operating items, which you guys show as, as revenue, was sanitary disposal included in that?
And I'm sorry. So you're looking at our, this, I want to make sure I'm giving you the right answer. You're looking at the Waste Connections corporate 10K or are you looking at a sanitary disposal statement?
I'm, I am looking at your Western District annual report, investors report.
Okay, so that's from our corporate 10K, which is different than, than sanitary disposal. So.
Understood. All I'm asking, but, no, yep. So all I'm asking is, is and what was the dollar? And if you can't tell me, that's fine.
Yeah.
In the impairment.
Right. So impairments in the, in the Western region or the Western area could include anything throughout Alaska, Idaho, California, Washington and Oregon. But in our direct rate requests and rate increase, those impairment costs are not included. We don't, we don't pass those back to Umatilla County when, you know, we have an impairment in California that impairments isolated and used in the rate case in California itself. So.
Right. So what I'm asking is what was the amount of the impairment cost directly involved with, with Umatilla County?
I, I don't believe we had any impairment costs in Umatilla County.
Okay. Sorry, I'm writing this down.
I mean, impairment cost on our financial statements is typically a closure of a, a business or a, maybe a landfill's closing or something along those lines or, or a large asset has been impaired and has to be written down to a different value and that is not the case in Umatilla County.
Okay. That's actually in your, in your financial portion of your annual report, the closures and post-closure
Yeah.
are, are listed separately.
Yeah, in a holistic company-wide sense, yes, that's correct, but not in, nothing of that impacts the rate in Umatilla County.
So I guess my question is, has the purchase price been written down under impairments for sanitation disposal?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And then also, also in, Kevin, you brought up fuel costs and labor costs and labor costs, it looks like they went up over the past year about two, three and a quarter percent. And, and that's nowhere near thirty. And then on your fuel charges, again, the benefits of, in your own statements, the benefits of lower fuel costs due to lower diesel and natural gas prices and other operating costs relative to revenue. So fuel prices have actually gone down this year, not up. So that's, that's a tough one too.
Parts and materials have went up, repair costs and our, our, our increase for labor, it's more of, it's more of about five and a half to six percent because we did above C P I in order to retain the, the team members that we have in place because of the increased pressure of, you know, other companies out there offering, you know, more money to come work for them. So even though it was. Go ahead.
That, no, that's good to know because what you sent, sent shows a twenty twenty-four average driver's wage of twenty-eight sixty-six and twenty, twenty-five of thirty dollars and fifty cents. And it also shows that your average maintenance expense has gone down from twenty twenty-four from a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and seventy-four to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, twenty-six.
Well, that's for two reasons. One is because we can't keep trucks on the road and we've been having to double up with our trucks that do run in order to service Umatilla County. It's been very difficult. It's been very difficult for us to keep some of these older trucks on the road. On my way out here today, I got a text message from my ops manager that we had three of our trucks that are down and we're trying to figure out how to cover these three routes.
If, all I'm going by is the numbers that, that you gave us. And then monthly container expenses is down. But also it looks like in twenty twenty-four, you purchased two trucks and twenty twenty-five, you plan on purchasing two trucks. So how many, how many trucks total do you have?
I have to, I have to look at the list, but for twenty twenty-five, the new trucks, we have a total of three new ones. We had one A S L that showed up in April. We have two roll-offs that are showing up at the end of August. Last year, I believe that we had four trucks show up. We're still having, still having a hard time getting these trucks to land at our site. And so I actually have brought in two used rear load from a site that we have in the Portland, Vancouver area and also one out of Yakima in order to still maintain the services expected in Umatilla County.
Okay, yeah. And I appreciate that and to, to me, it's, a lot of that is just normal turnover. Look, especially looking at, especially looking at the numbers that you sent us for sure. I really did appreciate that for sure. As you know, we, we have received several calls on, and I, I really applaud you for reaching back out to a couple of them for sure. But several calls from people that now are not receiving curb by, curb side pickup that they have had for forever. And scrambling to figure out how they're going to handle it. I mean, we have some seniors that now have to move a can, basically some of them, you know, four hundred yards, quarter mile to, to the end of the lane. That's, that's tough on, on us. I know it's tough on you, but it's really tough on, on the people that have had that service for thirty, forty, fifty years. I know that one of the explanations is you have bigger trucks now, better production, but, but it, it's not, it's not the same service these folks have had in the past. Part of, part of the franchise agreement is to continue the service that these people have had. So I, I guess that my next question is. That my next question is, h- how do we justify telling people? That we're not gonna pick your container up at curbside, but we're gonna charge you thirty percent more to haul it to the end of the line.
A lot of these people aren't even paying a drive-in fee and the roads that we're going on are so unimproved and so dangerous. And so tight for the size of our vehicles, that unfortunately, safety, you know, trumps inconvenience and and I get it. You know, even going down and talking to the customers you're ref- referring to. You know, I looked at the tire marks from where we're backing in and we're four inches from a a fence post. I mean, we're just shredding the needle every single day out there. And I not only do I now want to put my drivers in that position, I also don't want to take the chance of damaging customers' properties, so. You know, these, these are private roads, they're not county roads, you know, if we can safely get down and get turned around, we will absolutely do that. But unfortunately, there are gonna be times that I have to have difficult conversations with customers, and I get it, I mean, I totally get it. I, you know, ten years ago, my my grandma had the same thing, you know, living in Estacada, and I had to explain to her why the company came out and did that and. You know, some of my solutions that I think are feasible aren't what the customer wants to hear. They just, you know, they want the service where they want it. I get it, but unfortunately, safety, you know, trumps that piece, so I have, you know. I did send out, once it was brought to my attention, I did send a letter out to uh Gina and Robert to make sure that it they got in front of you guys, too. So you know, if you did get any calls, I also went down and spoke with the customers and explained. And one of the ones I met with, I also sent him a pretty detailed description of exactly what is needed. For the size of our truck in order to continue to service their private road.
No, and Kevin, I I I've talked to at least two people that you went out and talked to, one for sure, several times, and and they appreciate you coming out. The problem is, is that um it sounds like about twelve years ago. Uh they they went through the expense of widening the end of that cul-de-sac and and he probably told you the same story. But um now, now the trucks are bigger, um not by their choice, but the trucks are bigger. And they're put into a position that that I I'm not sure what what the real solution's gonna be. Even one guy's considering buying a lot next to his, just for for you guys to turn around. But with all of that said. The the hardest part of that conversation is gonna be telling him that that uh sanitary disposals. Also requesting a thirty percent increase in their rates. So it's, it it puts us in a, in a position. That 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 I struggle with. Um ev- even these financials, I I can't find a justification for thirty percent in these financials. But I I'm gonna leave that and let my colleagues have, ask their questions also.
Okay, I got a couple of things. I very much appreciate you being here today. I I, this has been a deal. And um I too, like Commissioner Doran, really dug into the financials. And one of the things, and believe me, I'm not a financial wizard, I I'm the first to admit that. But uh you just said in Yumitila County that you were um running in the red, which makes sense because. Just in the last couple of years, you know, you've spent, from the information you gave us, seven point six million. Um just in new equipment, and we had this conversation when you were here a year ago. About buying an older business and going right in and, you know, upgrading everything. And so I guess I can, you know, I can appreciate that, and like we talked before, um and. I'm a business owner and I, this is definitely a different way of doing business than I would have done it. Um because we live in Yumitila County and everybody watches everything, and we and we've already had this conversation. But that makes sense. The thing um I wanted to point out is, if you look at these financials. And I'm looking at the same financials that Commissioner Doran is, because I couldn't find anything as far as Yumitila County goes. So I am looking at um your corporate financials and um. Last year, you had a net income, Waste Connections did, and um. Your gross profit is three point seven billion, what they mean, and um over the last three years. Your profit has increased one point three billion. Um net income for last year was six hundred and seven million. And so from an investor's um lens, boy, you know, let's take a look at this company, I can see that. But yesterday, I um I was actually in a position. Where I watched an older gentleman here in Yumitila County, and he was paying his um, he was paying his. Utility rates, and he actually came in, like I said, he was older. And um was questioning the people behind the counter about a four uh dollar rate increase. And so, you know, they gave him the answers that the best that they could, that he needed, um was only able to pay half. Took the receipt home, said he was gonna take the receipt, the receipt home to his wife, and then hopefully would be back at. And by the end of the month to pay the rest of the bill. That reminded me right there why I was elected to be right here, is to speak to those people. And um, boy, we're looking at huge, I mean, billions and in profits. And yet, you know, I cannot in in good conscience ask the hard-working people of Yumitila County. For a thirty percent rate increase, I just can't. And I realize as a businessman that um you you've bought this new equipment. And and all of this stuff, and I understand it's um, it's to make the company stronger, I get that. But on the other hand, boy, this is a tough one because we also have to look at the customers. And, you know, to see that face-to-face yesterday, that that has stuck with me all day long, so that's a tough one.
So, I I guess I'm just kinda curious and and I kinda asked this a little bit earlier, but. When you said it puts you in alignment with those in the region, does this put, does, is Pendleton that much higher than than Hermiston, the rates, is that?
It it has been, I mean, we're slowly getting up there, but we're still not where we where we need to be. And, you know, I know Mike has spoke on this for a couple of years now, cause he's familiar with sanitary and kinda how they did business, but. They wouldn't come in for rate increases in a regular basis. They, you know, they'd wait until they figured out that they didn't have. You know, money, I'm assuming, and then they would come in and ask for the minimal amount. So when we came in and started looking at everything, and and I appreciate, you know, looking at Waste Connections financials, that. We are, that piece is very successful. Sanitary itself in Yumitila County is not. We are now in Hermiston, Boardman, uh Moro County, here again, everybody else that that has accepted the thirty-seven and a half percent. That we proposed last year, we're actually making a margin where we're healthy and 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 we can survive. We can't survive with these numbers in in Yumitila County. I answered your question, John, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're you're fine, uh you know, and 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 you did, um but I. You know, I I. I'm trying English now, so I I I'm looking at at the overall and like the bottom line, like my two colleagues are too, and and it's. It's a lot to stomach for somebody who's on a fixed income and but and that's why I appreciate how. Pendleton does it, but that's my question. What's it take for you to get to that level where Pendleton is? Or it's just the minimal increases every time, so there's thirty percent increase?
So if we, if we can do the thirty percent, then we'd like to base everything off CPI moving forward. So it's not gonna be coming back in here for another big jump. The only, the only jump you'll see is is what's gonna be required by DEQ through recycling. But this is, this is our our all-in, and if, you know, if, I I get, I get the heartburn when it comes to. You know, when it comes to people trying to pay their bills, I I get it. I I've been there, you know, as a young, you know, husband and. And father, I get it, you know, we're and we're willing to work with the county in order to get where we need to be, so. I don't have to come in here, have these difficult conversations, and then you have to tell me no or yes, and then deal with the constituents after, you know, after this is all over. So, we're, you know, with the transfer station, we would prefer the thirty percent. With the commercial and the residential piece, we'd be willing to do like a ten, ten and ten for the next three years. With CPI, and then, you know, after the third year for the residential and commercial, just be based off CPI. So we're wel- we're willing to, you know, not just rip the Band-Aid off the commercial and and the residential and do a ten, ten and ten with CPI. But something that we would request, because all of our, you know, ninety-five percent of our trash comes from all of our other. You know, cities and counties that that land at the transfer station. And some of the things that, you know, just, just simple things that I'm seeing, even Mike's rates at the transfer station here. We have, you know, fly-by-night outfits that'll come and grab trash from the backyard as somebody in Pendleton's house, cut up a pot tub. And then they'll drive it, clear down the sanitary to dump, because it's so much cheaper. And we we just can't, we can't continue down this road, it's just not, it's not feasible.
I I.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't, yeah, I I, first of all, I'm not gonna support a thirty percent rate for the transfer station. I, we ca- the county cannot afford to pick up all the trash that'll be alongside the road. That that just can't happen. But the other thing is, truly, if if sanit- sanitary disposal cannot make a profit. It's, especially with the rates that we've given in the last three years, two years, this would be a third. If if it can't be successful, then I think that Waste Connections needs to cut the cord. And and um. Because I, a- as much as Kevin, you 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 say that, that. We we need to increase these rates thirty percent, I, i- it's not gonna happen. I, at least in my opinion, the other two, my colleagues may may have proved it, I I have a hard time getting there, for sure. But i- it, the the financials. That you brought or shown us don't support anywhere near that from twenty twenty-four. Now, I'm not going back to when you purchased it. That was a, that was a a purchase by Waste Connection and they have, they have. Have opportunities to regain um their investments um through tax credits and through other. Other line item revenue. They, there there is a. Ability, an ability for Waste Connection, uh if they overpaid for the the business, that then. They they have other options, but not, but not to charge it to the people of Yumitila County or the west end of Yumitila County, in my view. I uh, I even have a hard time getting to ten percent with these year-over-year numbers, including this, the CPI.
Commissioner Doran, can I ask a question on that? Sure. Um so you said ten, 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 and then you said plus CPI, what's CPI?
It's been averaging four point four, two percent from twenty twenty-one until twenty twenty-four. I actually, I think, I think I gave that to you guys, let me see if I can find it.
But again, but again, you're starting, here's my problem from this back, that statement, is you're starting from twenty twenty-one. This is twenty twenty-five, and we're looking at twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, not twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five. That's a Waste Connection um vision, that's not a Yumitila County Commissioner vision. I believe this CPI this year was three, or four point two, I believe.
Thank you.
So that would be fourteen point two.
Yeah, yeah, if you look at twenty twenty-one, it was, you know, five, twenty-two was eight, twenty-three was four. And twenty-four was two point seven six, so the average for those last four years was four point four two. And Dan, you keep mentioning the cost of what Waste Connections persons to san- purchase sanitary disposal for. This doesn't have anything to do with that. These are day-to-day operational costs. This is what, this is what we're spending in order to keep the trucks on the road. Um, you know, keep keep members in place, replace equipment when needed, that's what that is.
And and if if that's the case, then we definitely need to look at twenty-four to twenty-five. You keep bringing up twenty-one. And 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 that's, that's not, that should not be part of our calculation. This should be twenty-four cost to twenty-five. And like you said, it's two point seven, but I think the reality of the PPI, which I prefer, is actually just a tad over four. But I I also agree that that sanitary disposal should have the opportunity to make money. I I'm not at ten percent. I I, I I could, I I could support an eight or nine percent increase across the board. But I, even at ten percent, there's no, there's nothing in the numbers that justify ten percent. Out of outside normal operating costs.
What? And I don't know if this is impossible, but what if we split it up like um, commercial thirty percent, residential six percent? Plus CPI, and I'm just throwing numbers out.
So what happens if we do that? Some of the businesses that we have in Yumitila County are large enough that they could go out, purchase their own truck and equipment and haul their own trash. So then, we raise theirs thirty percent, and then they decide to do it on their own, and then we lose that revenue. You know, trying to save it on on the other end.
So what's stopping them from doing that if we did a thirty percent across the board?
There's, there's nothing stopping it, but the chances of it happening aren't, aren't as as high as hitting the. The commercial businesses with a higher one versus a lower one for the, for the residential.
I uh have a thought, Commissioner Doran, we're running into a wall here because. Um you and I both are looking at the same financials, and Mr. Miracle um is saying, no. Those financials are wrong, so could we get um our hands on the financials that you're talking about?
Yeah, I I have some here, it's not anything that I wanna hand out in a public, but you know, this is exactly why the SWAC committee. Is in place, you know, Mike, Mike has been doing this for years, and they have gutted our financials for the past two years. And I'm telling you, if if this wasn't warranted, he wouldn't put his name on it, and Mike, you can speak to that or.
I'm glad to, on behalf of SWAC, if you'd like.
Well, and that's fine, but what I'm saying is, is you're asking us to make a decision, but we don't have any idea what you're talking about. As far as your financials go, and every, and everything that, you know, I apparently, Commissioner Doran has too. Spent time and effort to to come up with these figures, you're saying these figures are wrong. And yet, what do we have to base our decision on? Even though we appreciate everything that you do, I mean, that's for sure. Um, you know, we can't make that decision until we actually have all of the facts, and we don't have all the facts.
I'm I'm not saying that they're wrong, those are just Waste Connections financials, they're not sanitary disposal, and even last year. Mike and I and and Gina met with Dan and showed him our financials, you know, and we're in the same position that we were last year. I have no problem meeting offline and showing you guys our financials, so you can see where our margins at and why why. Why we're requesting the thirty percent. I mean, it's three and a half years, we're just running for no reason. It's, it's just not sustainable, and we're not at, we're not asking to be, you know, ten percent above everybody else. We're just asking to be in line so we can still operate in Yumitila County.
Madam Chair, I'd I'd make a recommendation that we table this conversation until we can have those. View those documents that Kevin's talking about or to discussing right now. I mean, I'd like to see those before making a decision.
Commissioner Doran?
Yeah, I I would support that, I um, I I appreciate Kevin offering to do that. And and maybe Derek um can be there, too, because I, there's gonna be a lot of questions that. If the, if the, if the financials represent what we saw saw last year, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of questions.
Okay, uh, so, what's a motion? You have a motion on that? Okay, okay. We'll go ahead and table this discussion. And if you will, uh, we'll work with Kelsey and set up a time and have you come in and we'll look things over. We appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Thanks. Thank you, Mike. Thanks, Derek. Thanks, Kevin.
Next item. Uh, DD payable.
Payable is referred to the board for approval due to the dollar amount. This is another one from the DD program, and it is reimbursed by the state. Uh, this request is to pay specialty mobility forty-two thousand.
They moved from Google. Second.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. IT purchase.
Good morning, Commissioners, Dan and I, Director of Administrative Services. And before you is a quote, an estimate for upgrading the data capacity at the Justice Center's uh, data center. So it's the data center that runs the both counties law enforcement and first responders, database and systems and dispatch and everything, and all the agencies within those by counties. And this is to upgrade it. We're looking at in the way we replace that system and its re- and its life expectancy. We'll be replacing that probably in about two years, but this is to increase that data amount so we can continue on there. Are the issues we have is is things change in the landscape. We just keep, um, our agencies keep logging more and more data. You know, scanning in more things, tracking more things. Um, we require more data for everything nowadays, and so we require more space.
And it is budgeted correct?
Yes, this was put before. This is part of our IT five-year plan, and it was put in there and brought forth to the Budget Committee and stuff.
I did see that, and I just wanted everybody who was listening to hear that.
And and the total is fifteen thousand four hundred and forty dollars.
I move approval of purchase.
I second that with one quick question of of Dan. Does Morrell County contribute to this, or is that a part of the reciprocal of?
Well, the way these things are billed, it's billed back and then it's divvied out proportionally on part of that fund. It, they use that dispatch and that funding now paid for part of this.
Okay, so it's.
The other agencies do pay a portion, I guess, in a roundabout way.
Got it. No, perfect. Thank, thanks, Dan.
Hey, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Uh, mosquito control district appointment.
This is coming before the board for a reappointment on the Yum-Metilla mosquito control district board of trustees. The term for Mr. Trot has expired. He's wanting to serve again, and so the reappointment is before the board for approval.
I move the adopt order BCC twenty twenty-five, that's zero three one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Uh, Fair Board appointment.
Um, due to the recent resignation of a regular board member, uh, which was refilled by a board elect. There is now a position in the board elect of the Fair Board for a reappointment, or excuse me, appointment. And Cara Ben Fosson, previously been interviewed and is now recommended to fill that position.
Move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded. I just want to make a comment. I think it is a great idea that these folks that are they're not on the board, but they're, you know, poised to to take over a position, do a year of, or is it a year or two years?
That's a year.
A year of just shadowing. I think that's a wonderful idea, so that they know what they're getting into. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion passes. Board La Guama person, purchase.
This is coming before the board for uh approval of additional money to be paid for the La Guama uh facilitation. Eighty-five hundred dollars is the county's portion, uh, the cost for this particular phase, excuse me, paid eighty-five hundred previously. This one is for fifty-seven oh eight twenty-five.
Move for approval.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Detox Center.
Well, that's me. Okay, um, so the Candy received a letter from H. Oregon Alcohol Foundation, uh, the current provider for the detox services. And they are requesting to terminate the detox program and use the facility for other purposes. And that is for us for discussion, and I think uh the director is actually on. Darren, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Uh, but real quick, before I get to you, Darren, I do want to point out, I did receive an email from Kitty Custer, your board chair, uh, this morning. Uh, she had intended to be here today, um, but due to circumstances beyond her control, she is not going to be here. But she was very, wanted me to point out to the, my two colleagues, that her not being here is not indicative of her passion for this. So with that, Darren, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, so, um, in operating the detox facility um for the past ten years or so, um, it has become increasingly challenging to um, finance salaries. Uh, the insurance costs are getting very high. And in fact, each time I renew every year, um, they really don't want to renew a detox facility. And because of that, our census has gone down to a point where it's really not sustainable moving forward. And I sent Mr. Schaefer a link to a video, and even in the metro areas, um, they're finding that half of their detox beds are empty, and and they're having financial difficulties as a result of that. So we have an existing behavioral resource health network, which consists of peer mentors. And we refer to drug and alcohol treatment centers. Um, we already go into the jail, we work with parole and probation, and we offer an array of different services. In fact, there's probably about a hundred and fifty different, different things we help people with, with homeless people, people coming in or out of jail. Um, people that commit probation violations, things like that. So ideally, what we wanted to do was go ahead and get that location, which is ideal for what we are doing currently. Um, and focus more on our residential program, which we do have a new building that we are preparing to open soon. Um, and the trend seems to be heading in that direction. Um, it didn't help our cause much. There's a couple other mitigating factors. They did build a detox in Baker at New Directions. So that took quite a bit of the flow of patients that we used to have. And they are also building one um up at Lifeways in Ontario. And it seems that um, we're just not able to get the people we need coming in like we used to. In fact, uh, we are probably about at a third of what we were ten years ago when it comes to the annual census.
Hey, I I'm not an expert in this at all. But from your statement, Darren, I'm confused. Why, why would people go to Ontario or Baker instead of your facility?
Well, they do have their, their choice in which, but the people that live in that area used to come to Pendleton, and they no longer do because they have a closer facility to utilize.
Oh, I thought you said that people from here were going there.
No, no. Um, the people from Ontario, Baker and such, they, it only makes sense that, and of course, their insurance probably refers there since it's closer.
Okay, that's confusing to me, but um, so is there, is there an alternative? Is it, is there another detox center in Yum-Metilla County?
Um, no, there is not that I'm aware of. I have been told that um, they will be building one a tribal detox soon, and they did get the funding for that, but I really don't know the details on that at this time.
So if you're building a new residential treatment facility, why would you convert what you have to a residential facility?
Um, it it's more of a station for peer mentors to make contacts with people. Um, it is not an inpatient residential program like what we have have for men and women and the new building that we have in place. That's a long-term residential. It is not a detox facility. Um, averages about three-month stays, um, teaching individuals the tools they require in order to stay sober.
That.
Um, Mr. Cole, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner Doran.
I don't know. That, again, I'm not the expert by any means, but it sounds like you're actually arguing to keep it open as a detox center.
Um, given that it's become financially a burden and um with nurses making between fifty and sixty dollars per hour, um, and a lot of the other costs, such as the insurance, it's really become unsustainable at this point. So we are looking at, you know, other options.
Uh, Mr. Cole?
Yes.
I reached out to um some folks that would be your customers, and our one um, our one facility here in Pendleton, I'm just going to talk about Pendleton, which is Promise Inn. Um, when I reached out to them, they um, they said that they have tried to work with you, and they've tried to send customers your way, and either they do not get a response or um, yeah, they they don't know exactly what you do, and there was some real confusion there. And then I also, I also reached out um to Capco, of course, who um, and in all disclosure, I sit on the board of Capco. But uh, same thing, there are homeless, um, there are homeless uh folks. And then uh, there are folks that work in treatment, uh, like you said, substance abuse, same thing. They did not know what you did. They've had people on their team that have reached out to you, absolutely no response. And so um, from my point of view, from what I've, you know, the phone, the several phone calls that I have made, I I don't mean to be rude, and and don't take this wrong, but I think you need to change how you do business. Just because there's folks that, you know, need help, and they're not getting any. So.
Well, that's the other facet of this situation, and that is that Gobi basically put our facility on pause, and that's been going on for several months. We do have a nurse stationed at detox during business hours, but um, that, we've lost employees as a result of that. Um, we can take people from out of area, but that is not enough to keep things going.
Okay, and I can't speak for Gobi. I mean, that's um, that's a, I'm just talking about the, what I reached, and I certainly can reach out to Gobi and um, visit with them. But what I'm saying is, is the the folks that really need your services can't seem to quite connect.
Well, and they, there is frustration because the majority of individuals in this area do have E O C C O through Gobi Insurance. So it's created a real problem. I I agree with that.
Well, do you think you need to go back and kind of take a look at some of your operating practices? And maybe reach out to some of these folks who need your services and see if you can't get these um folks into your facility? Only because we know that there's a need.
Well, our behavioral health resource network, peer mentors have worked with many individuals in the community. We will take them to Baker or Ontario to the detox there. Um, we've made every effort to make sure that continuum of care does exist.
So what is your, what is your agreement with the county then?
The, well, what we are looking at is, is the building use, um, wanting to originally, I believe in the contract, we were required to keep the detox facility open for at least eight years. But then if we decided we wanted to use the building for something else, substance use disorder related, um, we would have that ability, so.
With Commissioner approval.
Yeah, yeah, with your approval.
And how long have you had the building in use?
Uh, since about two thousand eight.
I I.
I'm confused.
I don't, I don't, I I don't, I don't think that our, our need has gone down since two thousand eight. I I I have a hard time closing a detox center in Yum-Metilla County.
Me too.
Me three. Actually, Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we retain the detox center as is and not close it for other purposes.
Second that motion.
Okay, been moved and seconded. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Hey, thank you.
Uh, let's see, path shelter.
Part of the C D B G grant that the Candy received to benefit the PATH project, one of the components for the improvements was to have an outdoor shelter. Uh, this does not include the outdoor shelter. This is just construction of it, installation, and then. And so it's requested to allow issuance of an invitation to bid for the installation of the.
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, any ending comments for the good of the order?
I'm just making sure we didn't miss something with the two finances.
Robert requested us to be hearing in absence.
Okay, I was like, what am I missing on your agenda?
We just got a message to to attend, so here we are. Okay. Thank you, thank you. All right, good of your order.
Nope, I I, if if you just, Madam Chairwoman, that I would like to say, first of all, happy birthday. But I'd also like to, since I'm not going to be there, um, take the time to uh, to say thank you guys for everything and um enjoy the Fourth of July. And that it's going to be a Friday, a Friday, Fourth of July is a rare event, and so take advantage of it.
For sure.
So true.
No, I I echo what Commissioner Doran just said, and uh, want to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth, and safe travels to our colleagues on the road.
Yeah, exactly. I agree with that. And um, yeah, happy Fourth of July, everyone. And I also want to point out, I am not sixty-five. I am not sixty-five. Oh, my gosh.
I'm going to point out that neither am I.
All right, thank you, everybody.
And neither am I.
Neither are you. Meeting adjourned. Be next year.
I won't be sixty-five next year either. I won't be sixty-five next year either.